Alright, so I think we're ready to call the order. So, this is the September ninth meeting of the Montpelier Planning Commission. We've called the order. And firstly, to approve the agenda.
It's approved.
It's deemed approved, okay. So, comments from the chair. My comments are that Mike had some emergency haying to do. And he is not here, so we don't have staff. Another update is that the maps that we marked up last time were accidentally recycled. So, we're gonna have to reiterate that. Lots of fun news. They were messy anyway, so I'm not sweating it. I did keep notes, so we're gonna just recreate that tonight when we get to it.
Well, I missed it, so that sounds okay for me. Sorry.
That's great. Yeah, and so we have a different dynamic this time because Stephanie and John are here and then Barb's not here. So, we had put off voting on something because it was sort of a split decisive or divisive thing. That might not be the case now, so we might actually be able to finish our boundary tonight. As a reminder, it's gonna be the preliminary boundary, but we'll get that in a second. Okay, so that's all my comments really. The other thing I guess I would have to say is that yeah, we should plan to, we're getting back into the city plan starting next time. We're going to try to focus on that almost exclusively. So, this is going to be the last meeting, this is sort of like tying up loose ends from other things. Next thing on the agenda is the general business. We don't have any members from the public here, so there's no one to make any comments. And then the next on our agenda is to consider the minutes from August 26th. So, if everyone will take a look at those.
Okay, I'd love approval of the minutes.
Wait a second.
Sure.
Okay, those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Disposed, okay, minutes approved. Moving on, we're going to continue the discussion of the boundary for the design review district. I'm gonna pull up my notes from last time.
So, in terms of the process, when we're done with the draft, it goes up to City Council for design review? Or what's the, they need to have public meetings on it?
For the boundary?
Yeah.
We're going, I think, we're going to, we're gonna have our own. This is just a preliminary thing to put out there to propose and then hold some kind of hearing. Probably one of these meetings, I would imagine. It'll just be a hearing that's dedicated to this. Get input and then we'll send it to the City Council. So, our whole purpose right now is yeah, it's just a starting place for the public to let us know what they think. My, I've talked to a few people around town just as this come up. And it seems like there might be support with what we've done so far here. Because we're not drastically changing anything so far. So, to catch everyone up there. We have this map that's the zoning and design control districts. And we don't have this on camera, do we, on the table? Okay. So, we'll keep it right here. And then I'll remind everyone of where we were last time. Okay, so where we're at right now, and these were all tentatively voted on last time, but there's nothing official. Is we decided to use as the basis the current design review boundary, which is the dark black on this map boundary. We decided that we wanted to add all the parts of designated downtown that are not included currently. Which is something that we had to do anyway. And that's on Berry Street. And just a small piece of Berry Street, and I think that might be all?
There was one.
Like the green hedge.
Oh, and there's a little around Miles Court also.
So, those are required to be in our design.
Those are required, those are required.
When they're not currently?
Right.
That's easy enough.
We could leave them out, but we'd have to pull them out of the downtown district, which we probably don't want to.
Right, right.
Yeah, that makes sense, that's.
And there were other reasons we were looking at it too. I mean, we had the full discussion and I don't remember all the details, but I mean, it seemed to make sense given the context of the neighborhoods in these places anyway.
Is it finishing off those like districts?
Hmm?
Is it, it's completing those two districts that are almost entirely in? Is it just like those little, those two pieces?
It's finishing that one and then also adding a parcel from, yeah, seven three. So, it's going up. That's.
East State.
This East State.
Do you want to mark her?
Going up East State.
Or this is final, okay.
Well, when we vote, I think we should mark it up. It's a sharpie.
Should we start with a pencil?
No eraser. I don't have a pencil, but we could do that. So, that's the first thing that we would decide to add back. The only other thing we decided to add was the rest of seven four. So, there's a strip that's currently left out of seven four. And the idea, for one thing, this is mixed use. This is, you know, we expect commercial development here and we think that that's appropriate for design review. That was a lot of discussion last time, it was just about how commercial, like some is likely to have commercial development. We think it makes sense for design review. So, this is just a, during our zoning, you know, process.
Oh, no.
During the zoning process. Mike identified these neighborhoods as being kind of, you know, connected holes. So, it makes sense to follow those for that reason. Okay, so the stuff that we decided to take out though from the current boundary is the parcels from nine four on East Main Street. They're sticking out. So, nine four is the yellow. And so, there's about four parcels there that are part of a different neighborhood. They kind of go up Main Street away from the middle school. We thought that that wasn't necessary to keep in. And then one parcel from eight three, the St. Paul, that's near the elementary school.
We're, the point of those little things were to try to match the design review to a zoning district.
Yeah.
Which makes perfect sense.
Which we're not perfectly doing, but.
Taking out that little green spot there?
This little green spot here, so it's one parcel. And, you know, it was identified to be part of the eight three neighborhood, but currently it's the only, at least the only one on long that street right there that's in design review. Another one was all parts of eleven seven. Be removed. Not having to find where that is. Northfield Street?
Eleven seven?
Oh, the blue, it's the blue up Northfield.
This one?
Okay.
Yeah. We didn't know why.
Again, to conform with.
That's just one person?
Yeah, we, this was identified as its own zoning neighborhood, so let's, since most of it is not in design review, let's take out that part that is.
And I think we had some unanswered questions about the green, can't see the number, yeah, what that was.
That's true, and I did not actually keep that down as a note, but.
I think we probably decided it was no big deal, but.
The what?
I think we decided maybe it was no big deal, but we were confused about it.
Yeah, and I think again with the whole neighborhood idea, I think that is something, I mean.
Yeah, that looks like, I mean, there's a row, there's a row of houses here, but that's this part of that. Parcel? Parcel?
Yeah.
That's sort of a weird addition.
Should be script measure or two, somebody at the CAD.
Yeah, these things evolve over time.
Since we don't really know where it's located from.
Well, the reason why some of these conflict with the neighborhoods is because this boundary existed before Mike created the neighborhoods.
Ah, yeah, okay.
That's why.
And probably before, you know, better parcel maps were created as well.
But the neighborhoods were, I mean, I wasn't part of that process. That was part of, were you there when they did that?
Just the very end of it.
Or you were?
Just the very end of it.
Okay.
It was like probably a fifteen year process, but.
I mean, that feels like a really, it makes sense to match those, because that was a much more intentional process that we actually know what was going on. So, I feel good about that.
Right, and in the places where we kind of break that rule, so that, as far as, because we discussed some of these things. Where, for instance, part of eight two, eight three neighborhoods, we decided to keep in tentatively last time. Because we understand that this is a bit of a gateway coming down into Montpelier from that direction. So, it does make some sense that this is gonna be something that's viewed more and it makes more sense for design review. So, even though it's kind of breaking up those neighborhoods, at least that part of those neighborhoods makes sense, because they're on the main street there.
Because it's main street.
And then here as well, is that sort of similar logic around the?
We punted on the college.
We, yeah, that's gonna be what we're tackling right now after we get caught up.
But it's similar logic in the Riverside on Berry Street.
Yeah. Where this is seen from different perspectives coming into Montpelier.
But this side of the street.
So, is this the oranges all, the seven one, is that all the college?
That's the area around the college and Saban's, part of Saban's, a tiny part of Saban's, beginning of it, is currently in. But that's, we punted on this, we didn't, we couldn't figure, we couldn't decide whether to remove this entirely or to keep it in or do something with it.
Because we can't actually control the college anyway, correct?
We give them wide latitude.
Yeah.
Wide latitude, there we go.
That was the understanding.
Yeah, not can't, like the state houses, that's officially a can't, this is a.
But I think.
Right.
Between, okay.
Right.
Part of, part of the discussion we had regarding that piece was that includes that big, like eighteen acre lot that is sort of up for development.
Right.
That was sort of the question, was do we keep it in because that could be developed?
Yeah, this.
Yeah. But then, I mean, this, this, I don't know, there's a lot of questions there. But just, so there's one more thing to get caught up on, and that's we also, we also decided to remove part of nine six.
Is that the little corner? Or no, it's in.
It's on Route two, is it? Oh, this, this little, this little piece of the yellow. We were gonna move the boundary back over to match the neighborhood there. And that's where we are.
Okay.
We discussed a lot of different possibilities and we ended up actually not changing the current boundary that much after discussing it quite a bit.
Did you talk about National Life?
We did, we talked a lot about National Life and, I mean, people, there didn't be a lot of different reasons. I mean, one thing that stood out to me was that the area and the gateway coming in by National Life could be subdivided someday. Could have more development, could have commercial development, things that people are seeing. So, it makes, it does make sense that even though it's National Life right now, it's the way it's thought of right now, that could change. And it could be, it could be totally appropriate to have design review over there.
Yeah, that makes sense, and it's definitely a gateway.
Yep. So, of course, nothing's off the table for our discussion right now, but the thing that we need to tackle is definitely the college and that parcel. And what we want to do with it. So, with that, I'm gonna just turn it over to everyone to.
So, should we look at some of the smaller things first and just mark what we know we're all good with? And then, does that make sense, process wise? I also have different colored markers, if that would be helpful, randomly.
Nerd.
For a meeting I was facilitating on Friday.
There'll be no way to figure out what the different colors are.
We could have one color for like new added and one color for removed.
Sure.
But I think anything more than that and.
Well, if it's helpful.
Flirting with disaster.
We do have color checkers. Randomly, I think. Facilitator.
So, I'm assuming that the folks who were here last time are still happy with what was decided last time. Two of you happy with what I just went through as far as where we're at?
It sounds like include anything in the downtown district.
Mm-hmm.
That's the only thing that makes sense. And then. Basically cut out little residential parts that were part of other zoning districts. With a couple.
Couple exceptions.
Minor exceptions.
We didn't talk about the other, this other side.
Up here?
And it doesn't totally match, but I don't think we, did we, we didn't talk about that, right?
Does that line up with like the Capitol complex?
Yes, this is the Capitol.
And then further off, the blue, is the blue hash tat, like hash?
Oh, on this side?
That's all, yeah.
This side?
This is out.
Yeah, the yellow and the purple. Oh, that's Capitol complex, and then over there, that's all still Capitol complex.
Is this all state owned buildings? Well, a lot of them are. A lot of this is state owned.
In the woods behind the state house.
Oh, yeah.
And then this is all this.
Right.
So, I guess it's just at the corner of Bailey and?
Terrace.
Yeah, that, and across the street. Oh, yeah, the weird end of Baldwin.
Yeah, so that part of Terrace up there, I think is all residential.
I think so too.
I think this is, but I don't think that this is mostly offices, office buildings.
Yes.
Like old residential, but now office buildings, right?
Everything, everything on Baldwin.
Oh, right, you're right, I'm all around the street.
These are homes back here.
These are homes.
This is, this is Redstone right here.
Right?
They are high visi, high visibility.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think if you're looking at the state house, those are in like the.
Yeah, the ones right behind.
Yeah. Okay. All right. What color would you like?
What'll show up the best?
So, red is removal?
Red is.
Green is addition?
Okay.
Maybe green's not bright enough.
Blue?
Red and true black?
We have.
The outlines are already black, come on. Look at the colors.
Pink, there's a pink.
I don't know. Are you going to be the artist? You can decide.
No, I was gonna let you do it, you're in charge here.
Bringing the work.
It makes sense, removing red, adding green.
Okay. Okay, well, okay, let's talk about, let's get the elephant in the room out of the way here. Let's, let's talk about the V C F A.
Right, so these, this is a couple of houses, my house is right there.
See what I included?
These, this is, no. This is a couple of just residential houses that are next to the college, which I think, I think there was some discussion on that when the founder came up last time. Why those three houses are in there.
And then nine one yellow?
Seven one, oh, 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 yeah, nine one, yeah.
Nine one yellow.
There's also a little part of seven one that's like out, carved out.
Oh, the purple?
Oh, right here?
The, yeah, that little guy, and then there's a little bit of the purple stuck in, oh, on both sides, yeah.
Sorry, I don't. Actually, there, that's currently college property, I think, but they're selling it? Or is that this corner one? Maybe it's that corner one.
I mean, any of them could be sold. I mean, I'm in favor of looking at the approach like very long term and saying.
Yeah, I mean, to me, V C F A could close, not to be a bummer, but.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I don't, this square is very strange to me in Montpelier. Like, I'm not sure how much it's utilized or viewed, but maybe I'm totally wrong on that.
The separate square?
Well, just that square of, you know, there is that, you know, Noble Hall historic building. But the green, yeah, the green, it just doesn't, it.
Oh, it's used all the time by all the neighborhood, yeah.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
But it's used more like for city residents as opposed to like visitors, right?
Yes, so like dog, there's a lot of dog activity.
Oh, okay.
And sometimes the college will set up a volleyball net in the summer and then leave it and we'll just go and play volleyball sometimes.
Oh, okay.
It's a nice community asset, I would say.
And do we have any, did the design review or historic preservation commission make any recommendations about anything?
Total punt. Yeah, they, through the regs themselves, we got some indicators of what they wanted and expected. For instance, there's, the regs that we passed back on to them include the Western Gateway, right?
Yes, and there was the Western Gateway and River.
Because we had talked about removing Western Gateway last time and then it came up that like, well, it's in the, it's in the regs that we're talking about. So, so clearly they, they anticipated that there's gonna be a Western Gateway in design review.
Because originally, we were planning to line it up with the state registered district. And it seems like having that on here would be helpful.
The state register, or the same, is that same with the national?
That was the only, yeah.
We looked at it. It's much larger.
Or is it this one?
We didn't get an answer yet on whether we actually should be including all of those things. Mike doesn't want to ask in case they say yes.
Oh, this is the national register, did I give you their, is it this one?
I think the boundary's the same.
Yeah, so I think it's the red one.
Yeah. That one's just showing what buildings do.
Yeah, so it is the red one.
So, I mean, I think when we had the discussion last meeting, kind of the starting point was is what's in place now is a good starting point because it's defensible for a lot of different reasons. That, that boundary that we're looking at right now tracks a lot closer to the downtown district, uh, the designated downtown district than the historic district. So, I think that was part of the starting point.
What do you mean, it cracks closer to the designated downtown?
It tracks closer to.
Oh, tracks.
Yeah, sorry.
The V C F A parcel tracks closer to?
I'm talking about the entire design review boundary.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Okay.
It tends to track a little, because as you can kind of see, the historic district on that other map that's next to it, the historic district has a lot of areas that's just not even.
And it includes a lot of residential areas that the current design review doesn't.
Yeah.
And we just didn't see a compelling reason to lump those in.
Yeah. So, it frankly becomes a question of whether, you know, what's the utility of expanding the design review district from what the current footprint?
It might be helpful on those edges as to why you're including something or not if it's in the registered district.
And that is one reason why, thanks, because I was struggling to remember it, but one reason why we cut these parcels out from nine four is because they're not. So, we were, we were balancing the maps off of each other when we were looking, going through it last time. And then, and yeah, that map is also a reason why we had a good look at National Life and Barry Street. This was a discussion of all of the areas that are left out of that map.
So, we included, pump out the downtown. Sounds like leaving part of National, or National Life in has been what folks were in favor of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
National Life and Northfield Street.
The other ones, at least how I looked at this is, these proposed rules sort of have a two tiered system. One is as if it's an, it's an existing building within the design review district. That's sort of we're all, I guess I wouldn't say onerous, but the more detailed requirements are for design review as opposed to new construction. The new construction sort of guidelines are less stringent, I guess. Um, they just sort of outline sort of broad principles that I think are relevant, but you're not gonna get into the whole windows and doors and.
It's the whole make it historic, but don't make it historic.
Exactly, and so, so I, there's different reasons to have different areas in the design review district. National Life, like the Western Gateway, it's a pretty different analysis as to what it means versus what's in the designated downtown area. Where you're gonna get more of the historic issues. And I think the same applies to, if you look at the, the college parcel, if we agree that the bulk of that is not ever gonna be really disturbed by design review because we give the college a broad latitude, it's what it comes down to, well, what's left is that eighteen acre parcel that the college owns that might be developed. And do we want design review to have some oversight in the development there as the new construction?
And did you talk about Main Street at all, whether or not that should be continued up?
You go to part?
Like between the green and downtown?
Yeah, the connection. That was, we didn't, we didn't talk about expanding, that's, that would be a pretty large expansion. And I think that as overall, we were, we're not thinking of going there. But it is also kind of part of this discussion that we put off, because it makes, in my mind, it makes more sense to have a connector if you're actually connecting to the college that's included in the new design review district. If the college isn't included, then I think using State Street, that's, and that's what you meant, right? East State Street?
State, not Main Street.
Right, State Street, yeah.
Yeah, it makes less sense. That's it, that's all I got for that.
And I guess, I guess the other thing I would add too is, you know, if, if you, if we agree that these new regs are more prescriptive once you're in the designated downtown area with existing structures, I think that that's an argument for reducing the footprint of the design review district as much as possible. Because while I think the historic preservation board or, you know, they've sort of pitched themselves as we're a resource and that's fine. Anybody can use them. It becomes a different animal when they're required to go to design review. I mean, anybody can use those resources if they want to ensure that their properties are historically consistent with the area. But I, I feel pretty strongly that these proposed regs sort of lack a kind of a cost assessment with any of the work that's involved. I feel like we need to balance what's in these proposed regs and recognize that, you know, at some point, owners of properties within the downtown district or the design review board, they're gonna have to make difficult choices about whether to put money into, you know, changes to their property or just defer those costs because they just simply can't afford windows, doors, or whatever the DRB requires of them. So, I'm, I'm fairly sensitive to that. And if, and again, if any, if any property owner wants to go and use the city resources to determine, you know, what they should do to make sure it's consistent with the historic nature of the neighborhood, they can do that.
So, what are, what are our thoughts about the, about the college?
Can I ask a good question?
Yeah.
The section, the parcel that's off down to Berry Street, the big one that's for sale?
Yeah.
What would be, I'm just, I would benefit from hearing a discussion about why that parcel should be left in. Because it's holding, it's got the only section of Riverside out that way that we're, that we are including.
Yeah.
And I just, you know, regardless of who it's owned by, I'm just not sure, it seems weird.
I, I agree with, I think for continuity that if we, if we think it's important to keep this in.
The whole thing should come out.
Then it should be extended as part of Berry Street, not as part of the college.
I agree, so what, like, what about whacking off that property and keeping the college in and then tidying up the edges and the zoning? I agree. So what, like, what about whacking off that property and keeping the college in and then tidying up the edges and the zoning?
I think that makes a lot of sense.
And there's not too much historic preservation concern out here because we're talking new development.
Yeah.
Right, and I.
But there is the, the general designer review standards though that would apply. There is the concern there.
Yeah, and I think we, in the discussion about the property being developed and the zoning boundary changes, the neighbors back there would probably enjoy having some extra review of what's going on, but it just doesn't seem super fair.
We, we also talked about that last time about how you, there's, there's a lot of, turmoil is probably just wrong of a word, but there's, you know, there's a little bit of, bit of, uh,
Energy?
Yeah, there's a little bit disagreement, uh, with the, these neighborhoods and things that go on in this area. And we currently have a lot of, uh, parcels that are not subject to design review right next to those that would be. And it seems like a sort of unfair imbalance situation with these neighborhoods that are actually quite similar to each other. Let me put another way, people on Saban Street have more power over people, what goes on behind them than, than those parcels have over Saban Street.
But again, I think that there's, it's not an apples to apples comparison. The design reviews guidelines that would be subject, that the new development would be subject to would be different from the requirements that the existing structures here would be, here would be subject to.
Yeah, the new, yeah.
Great.
I mean, it's.
Yeah, yeah, I get that, right.
So the question sort of just becomes, are, are we comfortable with subjecting the new development in that area to design review under the new construction guidelines?
I mean, I don't hate the idea of moving, like, moving all of Riverside out that way, including it all, and then leaving in that parcel.
But yeah, to, to me to leave a undeveloped parcel in here, I don't, I don't understand that. I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not one who's sympathetic to design review, expanding the design review in general, but that seems really, I just, yeah.
Well, I think it's a pretty visible, if you're coming in from that direction, that whole chunk of land is fairly visible across the river from.
It's probably, it's all equally visible.
Exactly, yeah. So my concern is that we've got one parcel that is subject to design review in that area, whereas everything is visible. So it seems strange that we would do the one and not the rest.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather extend it down Berry Street and take that parcel out than, I mean, that.
Or take the whole college?
Well, well, I, I probably am in favor of taking the whole college parcel out, but I think especially the undeveloped land part of it. I don't, that just doesn't make any sense to me that we're putting an undeveloped parcel of land into design review other than we want extra scrutiny of extra, any development, and to me, our zoning regulations should be covering that. I don't know.
Yeah, we do have, it's not like we're saying this will not undergo any review and we still have site plan conditional use subdivision regulations. They do be subject to.
And all of Saban's posters, other than that chunk is out.
Is, is out, so it seems odd.
So it doesn't, yeah, I, I would take it out too.
Um, are, are people more in favor of taking it out and leaving it at that or taking it out but in, but in finding a way to keep Berry Street in? How much interest is there in?
It seems like the designated downtown provides a nice.
Yeah, cut off at Granite Street. Okay.
So.
And would we cut off at the zoning or the parcel?
What, up here?
Yeah.
I, I had thought zoning was the idea.
I guess that follows what everything else.
But, oh, but you were thinking the parcel right there?
I guess. Yeah, whatever makes no sense. There's not that many examples of a parcel that's split into several zonings, so.
Right, I don't know how that happened. It's kind of weird.
Right, that's what Mike was saying when we had the developer come in today. Were you there at that meeting?
No, I think so.
Yeah, cause we, we asked, then why is, why are these zoning boundaries this way? And he's like, well, we actually proposed something different, but.
City council did that one.
I couldn't go.
And then someone came in and then moved it again.
Yeah.
Let's just go with the parcel.
You think the parcel?
Yeah.
What is, what do you mean, let's go?
So take out.
He's just, he's saying, he's saying, he's saying leave the, um, so there would be part of seven one zoning neighborhood that would not be in the design review up here.
Because arguably the zone should follow the parcel.
What part, I'm, what portion, what portion are you looking at removing?
So do you see the boundary for the parcel?
I see that boundary.
He's talking about using that boundary.
Which?
As the designer review boundary.
And then towards the college, so down to Berry Street.
So, this part in.
That part in.
This entire parcel out, including the parts of seven one.
I feel like if we're gonna do that, we might as well remove the whole thing because if we, as Mike says, we give the college a broad latitude. I have, I have design review authority in my name alone for not gonna exercise.
It could change. I mean, for me, for me, it's about the resource and whether or not we think design review is appropriate because it's a, um,
That's fair.
resource that stands out, you know?
That's fair.
It's exceptional.
Yeah, I would, I would probably keep it in for that too.
I would too.
That wasn't me like, you know, I wasn't trying to sell it just now, but.
No, I, I mean, that was, I was like, that's how I feel about it.
And, and this is all, I mean, really steep slope and, you know, floodplain or.
Yeah.
It's not, leave it in or cut it out, it doesn't really matter, but it feels like the parcel line is just cleaner. Imaginary line that's, that has not been clearly defined.
So do we take mini votes on each little decision or we all just say, yeah, good, and then move on?
Trail two is called college. If we have a, I mean, if we have a general consensus, I think it's sufficient just to do the whole thing at once.
Okay.
And I'm not, so it sounds, so, so straw, we kind of in straw polling it, like.
Okay.
So using the, is everyone okay with the parcel line boundary and, but keeping the college in otherwise?
Is anyone else in favor of taking the college out besides me?
Yeah, feels like we're playing Clue sometimes.
Yeah, right. Just, just throwing it out there. I think not, but I'm just checking.
I'm in favor of keeping it as is, but I'm not, that's not a strong favor.
You two said that you walk it in.
Yeah, I, I'm definitely open to, and I guess I don't, I mean, open to like cleaning up the line with the zoning.
Oh, the purple and the yellow.
Groundries, yeah, the purple and the yellow, but.
Mm-hmm.
If that doesn't make sense, if you know the area a little better, doesn't make sense, that's fine.
Which, which section? These two?
If we keep the college in, yeah, those three corners.
Yeah, I, we're just talking about this right now, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, um, we switched topics. I thought we did.
So are we all getting ahead of my head?
No, no, we, we were talking about that, but and.
So if we're good with that, then we.
It's that, I don't think Stephanie was against making those changes before.
No, I'm not against that. I'm just saying this change, taking out that piece, great.
Yeah.
We're good about that.
Using this boundary, and then how do people feel about cleaning up to conform with the neighborhoods on the other side of?
That's fine.
I feel good about that.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense at all.
And this is just like a couple of residential houses that, I mean, these are residents, residential houses too, but these feel more in keeping with this and not these don't.
Whereas this is just a cliff.
Yeah.
Where there's like a house that's down in the woods.
Oh, yeah, they look like.
Right.
Those look like they could be part of the college, all the ones.
Okay.
In a lining.
Yeah, so I would be comfortable taking this out and this out and this out.
What about adding the little corner?
Oh, this, yeah, and adding that because.
Okay.
So, yeah, cause that's, I think that's part of that parcel. I'm pretty sure the college owns that land.
Which one?
This little, this random corner. I don't think there's a house there.
I don't know. There's. Is that Summit?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's like, it looks like there's one house at the end of Summit.
I think that's this house, that's this parcel I thought though, like at the very end or?
At the, that, that is like, this one house that's just at the end there.
Do you access it from that street or from?
From Summit?
From Summit.
Oh.
Can I just propose that we agree to just make the boundary consistent with the neighborhood boundaries?
Yeah.
It just seems.
So just add that little corner? I'm fine.
Whenever the neighborhood boundaries, or whenever we have to do to make it consistent with the neighborhood boundaries, we have another.
That is, that house is.
Yeah.
Looking at it from here, it seems like.
Looking at it from here, it seems like it should have been in the, it should have been in the nine one neighborhood to start with though.
Right.
Are you looking at, what are you looking at?
We're looking at this, this orange parcel.
And the parcel lines.
You have to drive all the way to the summit to get to it. So it's not really part of seven one, it's really more part of nine one.
Yeah, what is, it's a house? It looks like, it looks like a house.
I guess we should leave it out.
I, I would leave it out.
There's no, we can't, we can't see it from anywhere.
You don't need to regulate that.
No one can see it.
Any more than we already are anyway. Yeah, okay, okay, so is everybody okay with leaving, uh, leaving that, leaving that parcel as is, but, but changing the yellow and purple parts?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, anything else? You mentioned connecting East State Street.
Wait, so what do we decide on the larger parcel?
We decided that we were going to use the parcel boundary on the east side of, uh, the seven one to sort of, to bring, to reduce the boundary there. Uh, and then to remove the part of ten two that's currently in design review and the part of nine one. Uh, but the part of seven one that's closed, that's currently excluded from design review, we're gonna leave excluded.
But the big undeveloped parcel is being done.
Should we mark that?
Get the marker.
Okay. So we just really just need this. I don't wanna color the whole thing.
It's perfect. What about that purple one?
Yeah, I have that marker covered.
Okay.
I did not wanna be the artist. Uh, okay. Yeah, I can start marking up what we talked about last time or, or we can, we can continue the discussion though.
Well, let's commute, just add the designated downtown to start, cause that's, we seem to be all on board with that.
Okay.
I don't remember which piece specifically that was. But if it's designated downtown and it matches the zoning district, I'm on board. Yeah, so that's still, it's still good as well, yeah, okay. Do we know why, just out of curiosity, um, this other side of Berry Street is still out?
We had a discussion about that.
We talked about it.
Okay, we don't have to get back into it if you guys are all good.
I don't, I don't think we ever, we didn't decide on why it's left out. We just decided to leave it out.
We didn't have enough votes to put it back in, is another way to put it.
Okay.
Uh.
My guess is you can't see it from across the river?
It's, it's not as visible from across the river. I think that's, that is what kind of brought our theory was. And, uh, it splits Berry Street, but so does the current designated downtown, so.
Yeah, okay.
You can kinda see the backs of those, that side of the street from the river and, cause it's.
I, yeah.
Those are all mostly residential, I guess.
I think so, yeah.
They are, yeah, mostly, well, a lot of them are like broken up into apartments.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's weird that it wouldn't be in the downtown district.
It's weird that one side wouldn't be, yeah, one side in, one side out, it's weird.
Then seven four was the other. This one, is everyone okay with adding that slice back in?
Mm-hmm. Is that the pit? It's, they, uh, grassed it over, right, with the old burn down.
It's a Derby Drive, is that what it is?
It is, yeah.
That, the rest, old restaurant?
I like to think of it as like Parks and Rec's like pit that was just like undeveloped for fifteen years that.
That's our, the pit, oh, yeah, that is, yes.
You should put a park in there, actually. Not the worst idea. Okay, so minus the Main Street parcels, everyone okay?
Yep, it's not even in the.
That's not in there either, okay, yeah, then I'm good.
Um, the one parcel in St. Paul?
The parcel in St. Paul.
Where is it?
Well, that one.
Still yes, still yes.
That's not in the designated downtown? That's where the line is for the designated downtown?
It's, it's, yeah, it's not in the designated downtown and it's in a different zoning neighborhood than the others around it that are included.
Okay.
Those are the reasons. Okay, so taking out. All parts of eleven seven. Ford Field Street, right, uh, the blue. Is everyone okay with that?
Taking out, yeah, go for it. This does feel like some sort of strange game.
It's like, yeah, cooperative board game.
Yeah.
We reveal the.
Killers.
We flip a tile. Oh, we lost the game!
Removed.
We lost Main Street. How do you lose the roundabout?
Part of, uh, so part of nine six, okay, so that's that, which is one of the most peculiar things on this entire boundary.
What about this commercial part of?
Yeah, I was just looking at that too. That's all the gas stations.
Yeah.
There's like one house.
Are we worried about doors and windows of the gas stations?
Well.
I mean, it's, I'm not trying to be physician, like.
It's, well, it's not just that stuff though, it's, it's the, uh, it's a regular design review.
If the, if we think that's like a prominent area.
We won't change the dominance.
It's less what it is and where it could be, I guess. I don't know.
I'm gonna guess there's always gonna be a gas station there. That's just what's gonna be.
Front porch forum would have thoughts on that.
Who would?
Front porch forum would have thoughts.
If there's. If there's any development where you wanna take a closer look at how it looks.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
A prominent area with gas stations, yeah. I'd be in favor of expanding into that. Also to make it consistent with the entire neighborhood, which I think is part of what John, John was coming for too.
Like what happens at School Street that we stop caring?
The other gas station.
The Dunkin' Donuts.
The Dunkin', right?
Like a noise can do, do as it wants.
There are a couple of houses in there.
There's a new house that just got.
I feel like that's.
I think that's, I think that's further down.
It's further in here. That's, yeah.
But I think, I think that's a house, I think that is.
Oh, there is a house, yeah, like mixed in those gas.
There's a house in between the gas station, two of them, mixed in there.
I'm gonna be, I'm not too worried about.
They'd have to be contributing for the historic preservation to apply to them, so.
There is.
I imagine they're not contributing.
Oh. They're out of the district.
Yeah, sure. I feel like.
Oh, right, 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 the.
Yeah, they're definitely out of the, uh.
The, the historic district, yeah, it's over there anyway, yeah.
But I mean, thinking about what that space might be in the future, I mean, it, it makes a lot of sense as a commercial space, even though there are a couple of houses there. And it's definitely what you see when you come into Muppets.
Let's do a, let's do a poll. Uh, who's in favor of including all of four two? Raise your hand.
It's four two.
I'm still trying to, I'm not sure if I am. I can just see an argument for it.
We have widespread indifference.
I, I'm against it.
You are?
Yeah.
We have one against it.
Well, that felt strong, so.
Five indifference.
That's what's gonna move the needle on this one.
Okay, alright, so we'll keep that as is, okay.
The size of it, okay.
Is the, um, the line up Northfield Street clean? Does it just handle those properties that you kinda access from Northfield?
This one?
Well, down in the, in the not four two zone. Like is that, that line is pretty arbitrary. It just like blows right at the.
Up School Street?
Yeah, is up School Street, so that makes sense as a.
School Ave, by the way, school street's a different, it's a different street.
School Ave, right, right, right. That was a good idea.
Yeah, so everything on Northfield is in.
Okay, everything that touches Northfield is in.
Mm-hmm. I'm, I still don't know what this is.
Yeah.
I feel like that's a separate parcel.
Mm-hmm.
And could be, I would be comfortable with leaving that.
Yeah, there's no reason to have that in. Yeah, there's no reason to have that in.
Yeah.
I would take that out.
Yeah.
These are just steep.
Everyone in favor of taking that out?
Cross it off.
Oh, that's a hill.
They regret this when somebody tries to develop right up against the.
They're gonna put in a, uh, they're gonna put in a wind turbine.
Stairs up there.
Well, they'll be required to have an engineering plan, and they'll have to be reviewed anyway, so, given this look.
That's true. Oh, that's right, that's, that's steep and bad, that's right.
So I think what else does, oh, that's super steep. I mean, even these houses are pretty steep.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, they're right against it.
Okay. What about this little ba-doope?
We talked about that.
Yeah.
Does it follow, does it follow the property, property line right now, 'cause there's a lot of weirdness in the.
I think, I think that is a different parcel, uh, and, but currently are, it's just our, our old design review, it's just that's a weird boundary right there.
Oh, so is this. So, can we just make it match?
What about the pink that's out, though?
The pink?
If you make it, um, in this way towards the neighborhood, yeah, right there.
This side?
It's like the solar ray.
Oh.
But yeah, I don't know why that's, that line is.
In there?
No, that's up here, it's up here.
That's not this. Yeah.
Because I used to, the community garden, it's like here, yeah.
Right, it's, it's, I mean, it's right here. Yeah.
'Cause I used to be part of this community garden, that's right here, front of it.
Anybody's behind it?
Yeah.
Right, the gar, the garden is out.
Yeah, currently the community garden is out.
And the array puts, is like right here.
Yeah.
So what, you wanna mash it to the neighborhood boundary?
I would mash it here and here.
Do we want that entire?
'Cause that's all, this is National Life Property too.
Right.
It's all, it's all one parcel.
And we think including all of that?
Should we just do the entire Western Gateway?
I guess that's simple and consistent.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Doing this kinda splits this top side of Northfield Street, where we're design review on one side and not on the other.
Yeah, but I think that, right, that's the community garden and the solar, right, I mean, the solar comes up pretty close to the road.
Yeah.
It's been a while.
Yeah, there's like a road, so the community gardens look here, and then the road comes neck through it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, you can s.
So it's like kind of behi, mostly behind the community garden.
You can see that from the highway, okay, coming down.
Okay. Yeah. If you're going north, you can see it.
Yeah. Western Gateway, from the other direction.
Yeah, I would just, I would be in favor of making it match.
Yeah.
The pink.
And both, wait, here and.
Western Gateway. Here and here.
Here.
And to take that out.
And, and taking the blue out, taking out eleven seven?
That's, this isn't in.
Oh, right, right, right.
Leaving out eleven seven.
So yeah, leaving that all out, so, this way, taking that out, having that.
And then, and then taking that out.
So basically, if I'm here.
Yeah, just matching, matching the pink.
Just, just right.
It doesn't quite match on this end either, just, it's not in our map, but we're going there.
Like, over here, there's something else that doesn't match?
Or maybe it's because it's not National Life Property.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's this, I think it's this, or no, I'm sorry.
We, I mean, this zone comes out.
I think it may. I think it may be behind the, the.
I thought I was remembering that, like, CCB is up there.
It is.
But I, it's not on that map, so did they?
Oh, you're right.
Because it cuts off.
Yep.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Your right, CCB wasn't.
Yeah, I, yep.
I mean, I would be in favor of taking that CCB out too, but.
I, I think I would too.
I would take CCB out.
Okay.
That's different than the historic college buildings, to me.
Sorry, tangent.
You might wanna like write that somewhere.
Yeah, well, is everyone, is everyone in favor of that?
Is it, it's just the CCB parcel?
It's just that parcel, I think, yeah.
Can I steal this first?
CCB parcel currently in design review, for some probably historical reason, 'cause.
Is it not a historic building?
I mean, whatever, whatever designer day took place, took place, and they built it.
CCB building?
No, but most of these decisions weren't for store preservation reasons, they, they were for just design review and having some more control over the, the view of.
Yeah, it's the college and then Turtle Island.
Got it, okay. Is it because it's a commerciallyish building and then residential area?
Well, that little orange is Turtle Island and the college, 'cause it's sort of, stands out.
Yeah.
But it's just the CCB part, it's in design review.
Right.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay. I'm hearing the.
It's seven dash eight.
Majority say that. I was thinking of up here since it's all. Okay, going back to National Life Boundary is, is, uh, can I get a show of hands of who's in support of changing the boundary as Stephanie described?
That's a green.
Wrong marker. For some reason.
I made it more confused, I know.
My brain's not working when dealing with this purple and blue together, I don't know.
This is an ad removal, not an ad, just confusing.
Right. Yeah.
So green, yeah, you got it. I don't think we have rules for how cleanly community garden space needs to be.
Do now.
It's not terribly clean. It's hard, 'cause it's.
I, I forgot, I'm pretty sad.
It's, there were, let's see, like thirty-six or so twenty by twenty foot plots.
Wow.
Plus pathways and shed and composting, yeah.
I think that was that big?
Yeah, you never really see, it's kinda, it's kinda covered with ridge and, right?
It's pretty big. You only see it, yeah, the ground northfield, yeah, and you can see it from the highway, but only for coming north.
So, by the way, when we do the city plan and there's the like future development map, and this is. I anticipate that we are going to plan development out this way. Um, it's not currently the case, but I just feel like that's connect, it's gonna be connected with design review once we get there, or thinking about it.
Yeah, that still feels like a weird area to me, because it's a lot of random commercial things. And definitely an entrance to Mopiler, but.
This part?
Yeah.
So, are you saying that it?
I could see a, an argument that it should be in.
Yeah.
It feels like we need a clearer vision and a plan for what's gonna happen there. Otherwise, I'd be worried that decisions about design become piecemeal or arbitrary or not part of like any.
Yeah.
Tugabe's vision.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Is that a, what you just said, an argument for, design review?
Not, not yet, until we like, interarticulate or get some kind of.
It's an argument for.
Not yet, okay.
Yeah. That's a good point.
So if through the city plan, we decide in our future land use map that we have thoughts about what that should be, then maybe it would make sense to.
Right.
Right, you may say, yeah, that needs design review if we're, if we're planning for that, for that to be developed in a certain way.
Did we ever figure out what? What it is.
What's going on there?
Is it because, well, this is a big chunk of trees behind the state houses, behind the state house. So that's the reason for that, and then?
That's here, but there's this.
Yeah.
It's outside of the downtown, designated downtown.
Mm-hmm.
And frankly, the, it's a bizarre relative to.
Are those offices too, somewhat up that street, I know Baldwin is.
No, it's all.
Baldwin is.
Man, there's none.
All, all this is residential.
This is like JFO and what's behind JFO. These are, these are mostly houses.
Yeah, they all are.
There's some apartments there, right?
All residential, yeah, there's some, they're all Victorian.
Yeah, JFO's here.
Yeah.
What we were saying before, which I think is right, is that part of the reason this would have been included is that certain views of the state house include those houses.
Right. I know, I'm just gonna plot myself down on that street.
That's the point.
And this are all in the, um.
Yeah, they're terrorists and. Bailey.
They're all in the registered district as well.
Yeah.
This has an official looking sign?
Yeah, it says social.
Oh.
It's a house.
I mean, going at Bailey, those are offices, they're.
Bailey is?
Yeah, that's in, that's in the designated downtown area, but.
Seems kinda appropriate.
Is this in the apartment building?
Yeah, with that sort of big Victorian net. And then there's, there's a circle. The Chapin Drive, or Chapin Road.
There, and then the National Register of District.
Richardson's on the other side of it, that sort of horseshoes up, there's some, there's up there, but that, like, for instance.
The horseshoe feels like a weird.
Yeah, but for instance, like, that is in, but right next to here, this is out, I don't understand it, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, I wonder if views from the state house were part of that intersection. Views of the state house.
Mm-hmm.
Should we just not touch it pending someone?
Raising our eyes.
With more, yeah, with more, stronger logic around.
I wouldn't even anticipate that to come up with a public either, I, I don't, I don't, I've never heard of anyone over there having issue with doing stuff, but.
Never been up here. It's a cool house.
It's very steep.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so are we done, are we there?
Anything else that's.
At our starting point, you mean?
Strange, what's this? Oh, never mind, that's, um.
Mm-hmm, what about the? Um, large parcel that sold?
Redstone?
Yeah, the Redstone.
I was just thinking about that, and really, I, I don't know if you have much view of it from over here.
You can't see it.
Yeah, so with no visibility, I can't see it, even though it is a big parcel that could be developed.
Unless, unless they clear cut.
Hmm.
Five acres.
When you look at the light around it, it's like oddly terrorist.
Yeah. I like my dog over there all the time, in case it's haunted up there.
In general, as far as wa, like, housing development, those walkable to downtown, I mean, it seems like the most primo.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of potential.
So if, so we took out Cliff Street, or city council took out Cliff Street, what was the logic for leaving in just this little?
It's designated downtown.
That's part of the downtown, okay. That's the only piece that's part of the downtown?
That's the only piece that's part of designated downtown, and city council itself recently removed this neighborhood from design review because of the, yeah, you know.
From the level one?
Yeah, and I think that homeowner, if you will.
But we, we. We had talked last time about potentially putting it back in, but it's residential, it doesn't really fit what we've been looking at as our main priorities right now, which is like more of a focus on commercial and making things line up with neighborhoods and it just doesn't seem like a great candidate to, to include that in.
They're with the downtown, I mean, these are neighborhoods, but.
They got, they also received, uh, strike tax credits, so it's a good example or case study as to why, what's some of the benefits of it.
Yeah.
Which they couldn't have done otherwise.
What are these little? Pieces of that neighborhood? It sounds, it sounds like it's part of two one, here and right there.
This is, um, this purple one is that undeveloped rocky, um, or just that, that rocky hill, this, this.
It's a park, yeah.
It's all the playgrounds.
Yeah, there's like a little.
Is that the playground?
I think so.
I thought we talked about it last time, and, and someone pointed out how it's, do you?
Oh, that's the, so.
Like, yeah, if you come down.
I used to, my office used to be here, and it's, there's like a wall right there, and then there's like, if you come from this way, it's, there's a trail up to this, like, it's like, it's part, it's a park.
Yeah. Okay.
There's a trail, there's a.
Okay.
But it's a weird, you, you wouldn't know that, it's very strange, it's a very strange park.
It's a great. Yeah.
You wouldn't know that it was there unless you happened to know that there was a trail off of this street.
Hmm.
Um. But, yeah, I wondered about this light green, and then these parts of two one that are out. That's the only part that still looks kind of not matched.
And, not to pull off, but I just wanna make sure this, and there's, the downtown splits the street. But the, I think we might have talked about that last time, we thought it was good that it included both sides of the street. Up, right now.
So, yeah, this part of Elm that's not designated downtown, but it's gonna, it's in design review.
Down, yeah. This, but it's, yeah.
Right, I think, I think if we look at areas and we think that the downtown, feel like the downtown should be expanded, or.
Mm-hmm. This is, yeah, this is across the street from me, where I live.
Mm-hmm.
It is, it is, I mean, this is part of a, a type of gateway if you're coming into town from Elm Street.
I think it was cool. Yeah.
This is about the area where.
If your house, like, comparing your house to the houses across the street.
You're in downtown now.
Is there a reason why one side should be in the, downtown, the other shouldn't, right?
No, definitely not.
I don't, didn't you recognize that life is undiscussively unfair?
It's a par, it's of some apartments, just, there's an old man who lists to change his flag every day, um, he's in a house. And there's apartments, and there's a church, and then there's some off, like Victorians that are converted into offices. Which is similar to what's across the street.
The part that you were looking at, Stephanie, are those, do those split parcels, or no? Does the design review line split parcels? Or how do you access those purple parcels that are out?
From this street? I mean, I think it's just including the ones on the street front here, and these are not.
Yeah. Okay.
But, which that as a logic makes sense. Although, yeah, I wonder if that's a different, is that a parcel that shouldn't be in then, if it's not on the street here?
Is it shaded blue?
It's, there's a green one that's in, but if it's in, if it's in the downtown, and it's, yeah.
Is it part of the designated?
It is.
It's just a weird corner. And I think as far as a minorly updating it so that it makes sense exercise, this makes sense. And I think it's a, these are defensible changes, I think.
I think they are, I think we, we've had a deliberate reason for everything, there's been nothing arbitrary about these suggestions.
I think the only neighborhood we might hear from is the new Berry Street.
And, and really, we had no choice.
Is that all the, the condos?
Right, so we have a good, I think that's the only addition of.
The condos on the other side, it's, it's on, oh, that's, that, that's still kinda red, yeah, you're right, here's the condos.
The newest one?
It's in the designated downtown, so, yeah. Unless we change the designated downtown, that's, we got it.
It seems unlikely to see a lot of new development or activity anyhow there, I'm guessing, since it was all just recently built.
Okay, so, ready for, for a vote?
Sure.
Second?
Second, we've got a first?
I think, I think we'll need a motion for the record on this.
Kirby's style, just a lot more informal. Can I get a sure?
Can, every, either do a nod or a yell. Um, okay. I, you need to throw out the potential motion?
Sure.
I think it would be to, uh, as, as a preliminary design controlled district to submit to the public, uh, to submit, uh, the map as reflected by our changes here. Unless you want me to detail them, you don't think it's important to detail?
I don't.
Okay. Okay.
A second.
Yeah, there you go.
Someone has to go first.
Yeah, someone, I shouldn't, I shouldn't, I shouldn't be the one making the motion.
I think you made the motion.
He was clarifying the motion on the table.
Oh.
Yeah. You first and a second? Is that what I heard?
Sure.
Okay, so.
Sure. You both had the second.
So, John with the first.
You win, John. You win.
Aaron with the second?
You win this round.
All, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Sure.
All of, sure.
Sure.
Okay, so unanimously, we have voted on this map to put forth to the public.
Uh, this just occurred to me as we were voting. Was there a specific piece that Barb might have disagreed on? You said that, you made it sound like maybe it would be, have been different last time. I was wondering if there was something specific that, where there was disagreement that was withstanding, outstanding?
Uh, sure. But, um. I think Barb was. Barb went along with things last time. Like, I don't know if she's, just because she didn't like vocally post them, it doesn't mean she necessarily in favor of it.
Yeah.
So, I want to speak for her in that regard. I think what I was anticipating was that, yeah, that Barb was going to want this parcel in.
Okay.
Um, the, the V C F A, uh, land in, and, uh, we, I think we ended up putting it off because that was gonna be quite the discussion we'd have time for, I think.
Got it, okay.
I think, I mean, we didn't, we didn't remove it entirely, so. She might not hate it.
And we're just throwing this out there for comment.
Yeah.
It's not done.
Right. Right. Okay, so, get that done.
You have to post things for people to be able to check them.
Um, see, yeah, I'll be passing this on to Mike and get the ball rolling on getting a hearing set up to take a look at this for the public.
Right, do not recycle on that.
I know.
Save.
Did you?
Yeah, save if I remember that, forget about it. That takes me back a while, I thought.
Save.
Save.
Like a.
Yeah, we're on the chalkboard for.
Although, if we're going off of a picture, that's gonna be tricky.
No, just as like backup for, in case this gets recycled.
Would that happen twice? Really, I don't know.
I don't think so.
We have two photos then.
With the backup photo.
There was.
As a government employee myself, I can tell you, I'm a creature of habit. I was in the business of recycling things. I do recycle everything.
Mike, Mike expressly said this will not be recycled, so, whatever that's.
Just ran it.
But I'm the same.
But then, but then you wrap it up and the person just sees the word recycle on it.
I do, I do like Stephanie's approach of just writing save on it, but save, that's, that's why I'm like.
You can see that in the conference room.
And that makes you wanna disgrace even more.
Do you remember?
Okay, so with that done, we're on to item seven on the agenda, uh. Which is to recommend to City Council the appointment of a new representative to the C V R P C.
I think if you're interested, you should just go right ahead and take it.
Okay, cause we were talking last time about your level of interest.
I, I brought that up, but I'm overcommitted in life right now, so if you wanna go for it.
Is anybody else interested? Are you interested in it? It's pretty much like a, okay, I'm not happy to give it a go.
Well, I'm not really.
It's interesting, but.
It's.
But, yeah.
It's an hour, it's, it's, you know, a couple hour meeting, I'm like, that's not, it's terrible commitment, but it can't, but when you have, when you have a lot of other things, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, the first one is tomorrow though, isn't it?
Including babies. Hmm?
Didn't you say the first one was tomorrow?
Yeah.
But I have a, I have a commitment tomorrow afternoon, but going forward, I could be available.
I mean, you can't be on it. This is not.
So you want it?
No.
So, I can go tomorrow. I would have to go anyway, because there wouldn't be the city, City Council.
I have to go anyway.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Right, that's why I'm wrong.
So, I'll let Mike know, first, okay, we'll do a vote. I'll let Mike know, uh, then it'll put, then they'll put you on the schedule for the City Council to make the appointment.
Okay.
Uh, and then after that, you'll be the rep, which will not be by tomorrow, obviously.
Okay.
I'll go tomorrow. Uh, I've already let them know that, um, there'll be someone new soon.
Okay.
Uh, probably won't go with you to the October meeting.
That's fine. What time is it tomorrow?
It's from six thirty to eight thirty, and there's pizza.
I, I, I would.
There's pizza.
I should have started, I should have lived with that.
Yeah, why?
There was never pizza when I worked there.
No one told me.
It's, it's pretty new.
I used to work for.
It was.
Changes everything.
There was never pizza.
When they moved the time from seven to six thirty, they, they said they needed to have pizza.
What kind of pizza?
Do they have good topics?
There's a mix of pizzas.
I could come to, I could come to this like second half of it. I don't know if that's appropriate though.
You could, but don't, I don't think you, don't care yourself, don't do it, don't.
That's fine. Send me off in October.
Yeah. Mike could possibly go with you. Mike, Mike will stay the alternate. So if you ever can't go to meetings, you let Mike know and he could possibly go.
Okay.
So you should call Mike tonight. Tell him, can't go tomorrow.
I know.
No emergency, hey, tomorrow.
As the new representative.
If I'm being, if I'm being totally honest, there's times I miss meetings and didn't tell Mike. Cause I didn't wanna bother Mike, or else I didn't wanna go.
Okay.
I was very, very adult of me, yeah.
We're replacing you, so that's.
That's untouchable.
The world, the world didn't.
Stay calm, let's replace you.
A long time ago, I realized that these things, whatever you say on tape is probably not gonna haunt you.
Rules to live by.
Nixon said that.
The odds are low.
Okay, uh, all right, anyway, um, okay, so let's, let's have a vote. Does, do we have a nomination?
I nominate Marcela. Am I saying your name right? Marcela, okay, to be a representative to the C V R P C.
Second.
Okay.
Oh, second swooped in and took it away from.
I think I got it.
She seconded it.
Yeah, I like that.
Mine was more confident.
Yeah, I like that, yeah.
Yeah, less sleep deprived.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so, we now have, uh. Suggested to the City Council that, that we'd like to have Marcela appointed, and I'll be resigning.
Thank you.
Thanks, you.
And might I just add that you're, that your public service trajectory is like sky high. This is like your second meeting here, and you've already taken on another commitment.
Says the guy who became vice sheriff, look him up.
No, it was way longer than that.
All right. All right, so with that, uh, we were going to work on the city plan update, but really we need to coordinate better, I think, and, and with Mike before the next meeting and, and just go with gusto.
Can we, can I just really quickly, since we're all here and we're sort of on the subject, I just kinda wanna, where are we? Like, I just kinda forget where we are with the.
City plan?
Yeah. What, what if we, I just remember there was sort of the branding statement, we had, we had reviewed a list of priorities from the other committees around the city, and I just can't remember. So I think I had missed a couple meetings, I.
I think there's a lot of confusion about that.
Okay.
Uh, and I think that's, that's why we should start from, start from a place with Mike next time of, of starting with that, like where, where are we going from here?
Yeah, okay.
We need like a plan and a schedule and just.
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Have you guys been reviewing actual documents yet? Has, is there anything written down on that?
Sometimes. It's been really a, a morbus.
Okay.
It's, it's been, it's been a morbus, it's been a form.
We looked at housing like before we even started, but.
Yeah.
I saw the branding statement. Was that for this city plan?
It was.
No.
Past one, but we may hang on to it.
Well, I think it did. I think it was just used as a model first to think about and drafting a new one.
Okay, and maybe I'll, uh, send this around again, but, um. I had created a template for, so the idea was like a lot of the committees or subcommittees would put forward some recommendations for their topic areas, so like energy, housing, transportation, et cetera. Um, but before we asked them for feedback, we wanted to give them, um, some clear guidance and a template to fill out so that people gave us information that would be useful.
Yeah.
And that it would be consistent across the, the different committees.
Yeah.
Um, and I started with Barb gave me, she's also in the energy committee, so she gave me some of the work that they had done, so I took it and then converted it into, uh. Format that I thought could be useful. Um, we've talked about it conceptually, maybe even looked at it on a screen here, but I feel like we haven't really. It'd be good to have people dig into it and try doing it, and I think going through that might help us understand like what we're working towards, or not working towards. Um, but it does seem like we need a clear, someone needs to do this and we need to know when and how, can't just like hope that the city plan happens.
So, I'm gonna work with Mike before the next meeting to, to try to organize some of these thoughts and get a plan going. What, what I'm thinking of is, uh. Including the agenda for next time. A discussion of the vision statement, that was one starting place. A discussion of, uh, the. Template that John was talking about and applying that to the energy plant. Shoot for that?
Uh, right, I already put, uh, I don't know what I, I started with a few of those, so, I, we, we can throw.
I, I think the, I think the best way is to walk through a subject matter area and, and, and in the city, in the energy plant is the most fleshed out example we have, I think.
Right.
Does that sound okay? Uh.
Sounds good.
Okay, so, so we'll do that, the, um.
I will, what's our next meeting? In Salt Lake City for a conference.
Two weeks.
And this, I think, I think that sounds like. That could take up some time. Another thought I have, but I'm not sure if it's worthwhile, is to put down as an item a review of, uh, the notes from when we had the citywide committee meeting. And, re, as a refresher, but.
What was that committee meeting?
Uh, so we held an event where we invited all of the city-related planning, planning-related committees to the pavilion.
Okay.
And everyone presented about three goals that they thought should be the most important for their area for the city plan.
Okay.
So we have that, and it's, it's a really great resource to have in our back pockets, it's how to help guide us and focus us as we go.
Mm-hmm.
But our problem isn't so much related to that right now, it's kind of with taking the next, the steps that we need to take to get moving on actual work on the city plan.
Yeah, okay.
And what do you think of, um, the concept of it being, um, something where we can move things into like a basket of things that. We are ready to go and, you know, this is a policy we're good on, and this is a strategy we wanna move forward with. So that we, we're not like holding everything up for however long, like this will never be perfect, but that we are actually.
You wanna have work baskets for like discrete.
What's that?
You wanna have like work baskets for discrete, for subsections or something?
So, so instead of thinking of it by, you know, if we have things coming in by topic area, that's fine, and. Things are in like, you know, draft, pretty good place and ready to go. If we move, if we start trying to move things into a ready to go and actually moving towards implementing things, um. We can treat this more, again, as like a, a working document, um. And not as this huge thing that feels overwhelming that we have to get everything right to vote on, but that we can move forward with. Things that we have consensus on and, um, start adopting some of those policies and strategies and maybe sending them to City Council.
Is that a major shift from before? Would, would that be a major shift that, would City Council be expecting that?
I think it's a big, it's a major shift on how planning, if on is done.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just.
Gets at one of the biggest problems we've had where we keep adding more topic areas and make it more and more complex, cause our world is complex, but we're still just a bunch of volunteers without more, more capacity.
Uh, yeah, I, I just, it sounds good to me. I just don't know if there's any sort of procedural or even like statutory limitations on doing that. I just don't know. I like the idea a lot.
I mean, I think when we get to a place where we have, where everything's moving and in a to-go place, we'll have to have like an official.
Yeah.
Here's the one that we're shipping up to the state to, to check off, but I think it's.
Right, that's kind of the thing we.
I think we can still do, I think that model sounds great, um, and it's, to me, feels like a, we set up a process for here's, here's a planning process that you can do within your committees. To figure out what it is that you want to be doing and then just go do it, instead of saying, let's wait until we get it all in our plan.
Right, right.
So we're just setting the process and the framework for, and then saying, here, committee, go run with this process and framework and it'll end up looking kinda like this, and then you can just start doing things.
Right, cause we're doing it, that happens anyway, right?
Right. But then they're all, at the end, they're all in the same sort of format, at least, so we can say, yeah, that's our plan, even though it's gonna keep evolving, which makes it a better plan.
And hopefully, I mean, if this works, and maybe this is, hopefully optimistic about it, but it's probably the best way to be if we're trying to move towards that, but. We continue that and every year, there's like an update to the plan where we shift things in and out of our strategies and it becomes less of this once a decade. Um, monster. I don't know.
So, okay, I'll feel a lot better once we go through one and, and see it happen, so, 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 so then things click. So we'll put that on the agenda to go through. You'll be available to help lead.
Um, so not next meeting, okay. The first meeting in October, but I will send things out between now and then. It doesn't, I, I think that discussion can still happen between now and then and going through that. Going through the template can happen without me necessarily there.
I think it, since you're, since you're like the, the main mind behind it, I don't know, I would feel better if you were there. We could try to organize it where the next meeting, we go through some other. Town, city plan related things, and we can save that discussion then for the one after. Is anyone okay with that?
That's good.
I don't feel equipped to like try to facilitate that discussion right now and not until I see. More perform.
Yeah, I feel like we could spend a lot of time next meeting just kinda figuring out milestones and rough timelines and.
Okay.
Sort of just taking stock of where we are and where we need to go. I don't think we need to get close to even implementing it.
I think getting a better idea of what, um, what's done already from Mike.
Yeah.
Getting, really getting a solid update from him, but where things are would be helpful, I think, cause we're all a little confused.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's. That's, that's ninety minutes right there.
Okay. Uh, so update next time and, uh. The vision statement.
The alternative is, alternative is we just pick a weekend and we bang it out. And whatever we're done, like.
We, we talked about that last year.
Yeah, you were the only other person who.
Make the plan for the weekend, I was like, that sounds great.
Yeah, it's like whatever we're doing.
Come over, come over to my house and like hang in my basement.
It's like, it'll be good enough.
We'll have some football games in the background.
No, 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 there will be no football in the background.
I don't, whatever, whatever you wanna watch, it's up to.
We're not watching any of your planning every time. No distractions.
I, I, for, I don't know, I'm, I'm hung up a little bit on wanting to hear from others before we jump into any like extensive planning like that.
Who, who are those?
Yeah, we. Well, we, we, so we've already heard through the one event that we had.
Yeah.
Um. And we can, so we, so we have that. It's, that's, currently that's all we have. I feel like, I feel like as we jump into any particular area, we're gonna wanna do some back and forth. Um, with the other, with the related committees as we do it.
Right, okay.
That's, that's just, that's just the way I'm perceiving of it, like, if, if we wanna go this other direction where we just do a whole lot of, like a surge of work. And then go out and seek that feedback, which maybe is a different approach that you guys are more interested in, I mean, and go along with that.
Let's get an update from Mike.
Yeah, I think we, we'll start with that.
Yeah.
Hmm?
Let's just get an update from Mike and I think that'll help sort of. Situate us. I'm really at the point, you know, I'm at the class, like I don't know what I don't know. Phase of this project, so.
Yeah. I have a lot of ideas, but I want them to be tempered with other committees and things.
Might be good to look at, um, City Council priorities as well. And see what's on their list that specifically relates to our planning efforts.
That's a great point.
In addition to the committee comments. Cause I think they have a strategy session every year, don't they?
Yeah, fundamentally what they adopt as priorities, strategies are what a city plan should be, right? So like this disconnect we have is probably something worth.
Maybe they should just do it.
Yeah, well.
They have to adopt it.
Yeah.
So I think there is that, the little bit of disconnect. So I think there is that, a little bit of disconnect between what, what we're thinking, what the city council's doing. I think there's also a bit of a disconnect with the dozens of volunteer groups and boards and things in the city that. I think ideally, in this process, like a lot of our work would actually be truly about like shepherding. All of these stuff that's going on out there and sort of bringing it in.
Right. A lot of smart people with good ideas, I mean, yeah, we need to just harvest it.
And some of them are already, so I know Parks, Parks Commission is already trying to do their own planning. Because they wanna figure out what their committee should be doing and so how does that, we need to figure out how, how what committees are already doing fits into. A larger structure.
And, and so that's why I like coming from a place of like wanting to have those conversations before us planning anything.
How many committees are there?
At that meeting, how many did we had, at least twelve, I was gonna say fifteen or twenty?
At least.
Twenty-two or something.
I think it's more than twenty.
That includes subcommittees within committees?
I don't think there are subcommittees in this.
Some of them are redundant, like there's more than one transportation.
Right, well, I'm just saying like.
And, but that's also not counting like team.
Commission could be within parks.
There's, there's like team bridges and these like non-governmental groups too.
Okay.
Right, so they, they, chapter wise for the plan, they would have to, there are some merging areas.
I was just sort of wondering what. If it's realistic to think if we could bring in a couple of committees every meeting and just sort of have us. Sort of a face to, you know, face to face with them for twenty minutes, half an hour, but if there's twenty committees, it takes a year to do.
I think Mike's plan is already to work with them, he has like that, from that spreadsheet, he had different meetings where he would be working with them. And then they would come to us at the end and show us their work, but I think we've missed some of the setup of what that process should look like. Cause I don't really know what he's doing with the committees.
Yeah, I think that.
And if we want them to use this format, which I don't, maybe that's what he's using, I don't know.
Maybe.
Okay.
Fingers crossed.
I'm just, yeah, okay. Yep, so we'll, we'll plan to get the update from Mike and, okay, next time. Go from there, just figure this out as we go.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, non-debatable, so, so. Seconded, and we are adjourned.